Is Eric on this list? Maybe he has something exciting to say.
He's looking for a story, Eric, just so you know.
Looking the wrong direction.
You know your speed lights out over there.
I've been out for a month. Had to give us a set of batteries up to the colony to get them going up in Scaly Valley for a traffic complaint they wanted to address.
It's still slow.
I know, because you have to slow down and see if it's recording your speed.
I shut it off and started again. Well, oh no, and then I had to forward. Yeah, I forwarded to the council again, but I still couldn't make sense of it all, so I just... As long as I got yours to work, I thought I'll send it to me.
Allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
This is from our September 12, 2016, regular scheduled council meeting, with certain additions or corrections that we can have those minutes approved.
Make a move to approve the minutes from September 12.
Motion on the floor by Mary, can we get a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Donnie, all those in favor, please seconded by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Agenda this evening?
I have one more election judge.
Okay. Any other additions or corrections?
We move the treasurer's report.
Any other additions, corrections? Our agenda approved.
Take that motion.
Motion on the floor by Steph, can we get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mary, all those in favor, please seconded by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. First item on the agenda, I know we made a motion to do this at our last meeting, but technically we should do it at this meeting as well. That would be the approval of our preliminary budget levy amount, put those numbers out at the last meeting. We need to have a motion to have that approved, and that is our preliminary.
I move to approve your preliminary budget and levy.
Motion on the floor by Mary.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mike, all those in favor, please seconded by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. We need to set a budget hearing, which will be our truth and taxation meeting coming up, and that has to be in before, what, mid-December?
They usually do it the first week, your first meeting in December.
First meeting in December?
December 5th. December 12th, December tomorrow.
December 12th.
6:30, before the regular meeting.
What's anybody's got? Mike, is that your motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion on the floor from Mike, can we get a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Donnie, all those in favor, please seconded by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Next thing we have on the agenda is to... Jason from David Drunon Associates, that is our financial advisor, and they are setting up the terms of the TIP agreement with the state of the EDA and Essentia Health. Jason?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Back in early August when we finalized the TIP district, one of the last steps in this process was to lay out the agreement, the development agreement in terms. The attorneys are working on a business subsidy development agreement that lays out the relationship between the city and Essentia, specifically the jobs, wages, development goals, the specific items that are required under some of the business subsidy laws and that. But the one piece that we're missing is just something more formal between the EDA and city, because technically, Essentia's not getting the TIP, you're using the TIP to reimburse the EDA.
Right.
So I'm bringing it forward for your consideration, and I just a real specific terms, I didn't want to get too specific, because again, we've got that business subsidy agreement that's being worked on, I didn't want to duplicate or... So I concentrated mostly on the relationship between the EDA and the city. Just a couple things, Mayor and Council, the 60 under peers' EDA commitments, the 63 by, that's what's specifically listed right now in the draft agreement that I've seen. So I think that covers most of the contamination, removal, demolition, site compacting and all that. So if we feel we're going to be low on that number, we should probably get that not only in this terms letter, but also in the business subsidy agreement as it comes forward from the city's attorney. But for right now, that's the number that they're using, so I've incorporated that number into the terms. The EDA, the payment of the tax increment, I left it at about 7,500. Our fees specifically to the EDA will be about 3,750 because of our relationship with NGPA, they're paying 50% of this. But I didn't know again if the EDA was going to be responsible for any of the attorney's items or specific development items, so I left that at about 7,500. So the max reimbursement to the EDA would be right around that 71,000. As we talked about it specifically, from the city's standpoint, this would be an interest-bearing note, 4%, standard language that we normally see in somebody's. So those are the specific items, again, nothing too detailed, but I wanted the council to consider these terms, so we at least have it documented moving forward. My preference, Council, would be that this business subsidy agreement gets finished very soon. I know they're going to be coming with a building permit here pretty soon. Ideally, we should have that business subsidy development agreement signed and sealed before they start construction. Because right now, we're working on a lot of, there's been some work, we're working on a lot of draft language and some of that stuff. So I told city staff last week that it would be nice to have the business subsidy development agreement signed, sealed, delivered at the time building permit is issued, so I'm not sure where it's at between the attorneys.
Do we need Essentia's signature on the helm of this?
Yeah.
Yep.
That's going to be the developers agreement between the city and Essentia.
Yep. And I've seen the draft of the business subsidy agreement, it lays out all the terms we talked about in July, so I have no concerns there. It just would be nice to have it formalized, finalized before that.
What do you actually need from us tonight, Jason?
I'd like the...
A motion to approve the final TIP agreement with you?
Yes, correct, Mayor, if you could, just there's a letter that I got put together here outlining these terms.
Yep.
If the council could make that motion to accept these terms as presented, that'll help us move forward. And we'd also like the EDA just to consider this in a future EDA meeting, but for the most part, we wanted council approval here tonight, so.
Is that 63.5 what it cost us?
It's actually going to be less than that at all.
Because I, we should know what we're putting in.
Yeah. Yeah, I suppose we'll have right off the top.
Yeah, well, we worked kind of together to get the closest amount that we possibly could, but we gave the most and less, five years ago.
Yeah, less, we talked about it.
That's why it's legal fees and everything, too.
Yeah, but they put that in there, too.
Right.
Right.
That's clear, but we didn't, we didn't have that in our numbers, I know, so.
When it comes, when all bills and everything are finalized, when we get that final development agreement, we can formally, and I, again, renegotiate these terms or reapprove these. We just need something on public record that...
Sure. From now, 63.5 and then going up to 71 with the legal fees, and I think we're going to be pretty comfortable there.
Going through the numbers with Nicole and Harry last week, we were really close, plus you also have a grant from Moore's County Community Fund that helped offset some of this. So I think we're going to be really close to that 60, 60, 63.5.
We will need a motion to enter into this agreement with David Drunon Associates.
I make that motion.
Motion on the floor by Stephanie.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mike, all those in favor, please seconded by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously.
Perfect, thanks, Mayor and Council.
Well, thanks for all your help with this, we appreciate you.
Peace and well, we'll talk soon. Have a good night.
You too.
Thanks, Jason.
Next, I'm going to bring the chief up here, we have court data services, this is an amendment to something that kind of really did, I think Eric did, oh, every five years this comes into play.
Every five years, the county attorney wants us to go over our joint's powers referenced, like every squad car we have, our communication is to get onto the secure channels through the VCA. And they do the same thing, and they're the sort of ones that amend our agreements, so we're all on the same page. So they order us to do action reports, criminal histories, drug 28s, 45s, it's a program that we have to beat in agreement.
We have to have.
Exactly.
We need this information, because these records are all just information stored through the VCA. So between you and the county attorney and things of that nature, we need to be able to access this information.
Yes, sir. So it's just the one is the resolution, the other one's the different agreements, their signatures for them all. I gave Nicole finalized copy, just like the signatures from, I believe, just you, the mayor, the rest are going to go.
We actually need to, did you see what the amendments actually were in there, because I couldn't, I couldn't tell anything.
No, this is the first one I have, because it's five years, and I've been here for five years, so this is the first resolution and the joint power statement that I've seen since taking over the chief's role.
Yeah, and there might be some changes in there, but I went through it twice, and everything looked fine to me, I mean, it would be everything in there that makes sense. Yeah, makes sense to me, I don't know if you guys have any questions to answer or not, but...
No, it actually looked similar to what we had five years ago.
Okay. So I think the first thing that we will need to do is we will need to approve the amended CJDN subscriber agreement. We will need a motion for that.
I'll make that motion.
Motion on the floor by Don.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mike, all those in favor, please seconded by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously, and then we will have to adopt this via resolution.
Yeah, I got the number here.
What is the resolution number on that?
0926, 2016 dash one.
We will need a motion to have that approved.
I move to approve resolution number 0926, 2016 dash one.
That is approving the state of Minnesota joint power agreement.
I'll second that.
Motion on the floor by Mary and seconded by Donnie, all those in favor, please seconded by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Thank you.
Welcome.
Actually, we should leave him up here for the next one, too.
Yeah.
You want to, if you want to just shout, that's fine, too, but we have something on here about no parking signs, and we're kind of looking at Oak Street and First Avenue North. So would that be First Avenue North, north, Oak Street from there, north of First Avenue?
Right cross from Red's Auto to West.
Right cross from Red's Auto.
Cross from Red's Auto?
Here in the house.
Oh, a dead-end street.
We got a couple accidents back there where it's just getting too cramped, and then another one that came attention was Oak behind the Villa, right, two complaints, and we looked at them. And if there was an emergency, such as a fire or something medical for the Villa, there's no way fire trucks could respond through there.
Is that where there's a semi parked in there a lot of times, or am I thinking of the road?
The transport buses in there for, to transport some of the seniors to different climates.
Was somebody parked in a semi back there a while ago?
No, I'm sure they're loading food.
No, was the police down?
I go down that street a lot in town.
That's the next one, Don.
Okay. I haven't seen it there, but so then I went to look at it, and I, me and Bob both spoke, and we thought it'd be best to put no parking signs on the west side of Oak, that way they can park, the doctors are and the staff are. But it would keep the street available to any emergency responding vehicles, otherwise there was twice now where you cannot get out one of our pumper trucks through there.
Okay.
So I just think Bob would...
You're going to have an ambulance?
No. So Bob looked at it, he makes sense, he's in agreement, and then on First Avenue North, it's just going to be one sign, no parking from this, from this direction back or something like that. And I would just keep that a little more available for people to back out and not get these accidents anymore. I think it's needed personally, it's a good idea, so.
Well, that street is pretty small, it's 26 feet face to face, so. So when they park on both sides, if we had to come through there with any emergency vehicle, we don't have the room.
Well, if that's your recommendation and that's Public Works and...
Yeah, well, Eric and I looked at it together.
The only thing over by the Villa is I think there should be more sign, if we're going to put more parking on the west side, on the front side or on the east side where the doctor's sign is, it should say patient parking only or something. Because those people that are parking now on the west side are going to take the rest of the spots up, and old people aren't going to be able to go in that place and get any kind of medical.
Well, I've been watching the administration for the bill and the announcements, there are workers to park either on the front or the other side of the street to get away from that, and I think by doing that, it's really freed it up where...
They've already started doing that.
Yep, they started doing it, and this is just going to be, where if they do park there, we can at least put a little reminder tag on the windshield and just keep them off the stop to keep it free.
So it's employee parking, they're mostly parking there?
Yeah. Yep.
Don't they park in the little roundabout?
It's full.
Yeah, the roundabout is, on the east side is supposedly for mostly visitors, that's always full.
Oh, okay.
West side parking lot is always full, and then there's...
It's packed, yeah, it is what it is, but they address the sure health, but this way, it just gives a reminder, we don't have to worry about fire trucks or ambulance to get to it more.
We will need a motion to have that approved.
I'd make a motion that we approve the no parking signs for Oak Street and First Avenue North.
Second that.
Motion on the floor by Mike and seconded by Mary, all those in favor, please seconded by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. We have to straighten out some of our annual appointments with the hiring of our new city administrator, so we will need to actually add Nicole to those committees that our city administrator generally sits on. Nicole, do you have a list of those that...
I do, yeah, the committees that Scott were on, the electric committee, solid waste committee, finance committee, development regulations and safety committee, tobacco hearing board, comprehensive plan board, and EDA.
We will need a motion to have her put on those boards and committees.
I move to have Nicole Bartman put on the boards to place Scott's air.
Motion on the floor by Mary.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Donnie, all those in favor, please seconded by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously, the other one would be our data privacy, I wanted that on a separate motion.
I'll make that motion.
Motion on the floor by Mike.
I second that.
Seconded by Mary, all those in favor, please seconded by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Nicole, what do we have on the fireworks and merch and safety deposit box?
Um, you know, I found, we do have one key here, but as far as knowing who is all the holders, I haven't gotten hold of them, but...
I think it was...
Mayor, clerk, and administrator, and treasurer.
Actually, on the safety deposit box, I think it was myself, Scott, and Linda.
Is that who we want to keep on it, is?
We should have the city clerk up there, too, actually.
Okay.
Huh?
Whoever, Pan-Treasure.
Yeah. I mean, I'd feel more comfortable that way, but...
Just, you know, after elections, we'll change it again.
Change it again, yeah. Unless we want to just leave it to three, and then we do our annual appointment.
Might get it out of their report, Dave gets on.
Do you predict it to be elected on people, but...
Well, if some, yeah, yeah, what we have to do is actually, we would have to wait till the first meeting.
Well, that can be on the...
That's our annual, that's our annual.
That is my nation, so everything will change then.
Let's just approve, Nicole, myself, and Linda Fino on the safety deposit box, that's okay with you guys? Can we get a motion to that effect?
I'll make the motion.
Motion on the floor by Donnie and seconded by Mary, all those in favor, please seconded by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. And those would also be, well, actually, let's do a separate motion on that, too, because we would have to have the names on the account, our account information as well, so that would be the same three individuals.
I make a motion to use the same individuals for the names on accounts?
Motion on the floor by Mary.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Don, all those in favor, please seconded by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. We have some annual membership dues coming up here, and I think the ones that the city is normally involved in would be the League of Minnesota Cities. And Nicole, did we want the, or the council, we want the Clerks and Finance Officers Association as well, $35, I think we should...
Yeah.
And we were always for that.
In small cities.
The League of Minnesota Cities.
At small cities, we were never...
No.
You didn't?
No. So if we can approve the league's annual dues at $1,578, and the Municipal Clerks and Finance Officers Offices Association of Minnesota's dues would be at $35.
So you don't do the mayor's association membership?
I haven't, no.
I did. I make a motion that we approve our membership dues for the League of Minnesota Cities at $1,578, and the Municipal Clerks and Finance Officers Association of Minnesota for $35.
On the floor by Mike.
I'll second.
Seconded by Stephanie, all those in favor, please seconded by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Mary, what did you have for election judge?
I have one more election judge for you to approve, and I submitted it to the House already, it's Pearl Wilson.
We will need a motion to have Pearl.
I'll make that motion.
Motion on the floor by Mike to approve Pearl Wilson, if one of our election judges can we get a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Donnie, all those in favor, please seconded by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Do we have anything, building permits done, do we have building permits?
We sure do, we have three building permits, one from premium concrete, they're just adding the bathroom inside the building they built last year. And also, they're going to enclose part of their overhang, they had talked about doing it, they're not for storage. One for Sid Henneken for a sidewalk, just to go from his house to the front of 125. And then Chris Young is putting in a, in his home, is putting in a 14 by 16 foot shed, partway down the hill, in his backyard, so we have those three.
We will need a motion to have those approved or denied. I have three building permits, there's a motion by Mary to approve all three permits. Get a second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Stephanie, all those in favor, please seconded by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. I don't think we have Bob here this evening, Chief, did you have anything else?
I do, sir. Report for August, call calls 120, nothing exciting, just the calls are always still increasing, but it is what it is. Last time I was here, Toby, you asked if there was any things that we seen where, you know, spikes in our... Yep, slight attach. The calls per day, you see that, how Fridays and Wednesdays, for whatever reason, Wednesdays are business day, 147 calls, and Fridays. And then if you go to the next page, time of days, busiest time is between 2 o'clock and 8 o'clock are the time that calls are through the ceiling. But that, if you guys want to see that, yeah. Reports to the state were all due this week, reference to alleged misconduct for 2015, that was submitted with zero being reported on the city, for the city of peers. Policy and training compliance reports were due this week, they were submitted, we are all up to snuff with our policy and procedures for city peers. And I find out Wednesday if I was awarded the AED and that rescue suit for Jason's squad car, so if I get that, I'll let you know, and that way we'll have all the same rescues.
You want to let everybody know where that...
I don't want to say until they give it to me, until I make sure we address that when it comes to...
All right.
Terry can put that in there, I can...
Then you'll have a story from him.
That's all we have.
We wait.
Dan? How are you doing, Daniel?
Good. So, apart from those that I'm a certain green smeller. I put it out there, I asked Jacobson to give me some state contract pricing, that's the best pricing we've always gotten in the past. Last time we bought a green screen four plus, it was 2006, and we paid about the 20,000, and it came with the reels. I guess, long story short, the groomers I transferred from the previous one to that one, so the groomers on my current mower is 20 years old. And I was thinking of updating the mower, the reels, and the groomers, but after seeing the price for that, I'm pretty sure exactly, I can rebuild the groomers for under $2,000. And the reels really don't have any wear that we can fix, so I guess my recommendation would be to just buy the mower at 19,882 dollars. And I will use my current reels and groomers, the groomers attached to the reels, they're like a deep patcher. I can get another year or two out of probably, so it's not immediately done that, unless they go down, it's not like I can't mow without them, it's not like I can't mow fairways for a week and they grow up control. I don't even use the groomers in July and August, it's hot anyways, so if something would go down with groomers, I'll fix them at the time, indeed, I don't see the, raise this, excuse me, spend that kind of money at this time, so I would like to...
Dan, did you check within JPA?
Scott and I did, the last several pieces of equipment, and the state contract was still lower, on the rough mower, by far. Wait, and the airifier we did last, in time with Anna, the state contract is always the lowest. So, I mean, I can check again if you want, but, and then the other question was, would you want me to purchase that before the new year, after the new year, I don't need the mower till the spring. But this year's a pretty good year financially, I've got it in the budget either way, I might need a piece of equipment next year, so I thought, I haven't really bought any, I would just see or throw it on this year.
Let's do this year, so we can get it this year. But is, seeing as though this is not an emergency or thing we need to do right away.
Yeah.
Could you go back and check with NGPA just to make sure, because buying from NGPA, we also get credit back from the city to purchase other things, so it's a, it's a really good thing for the city. It's comfortable, you know.
Yep.
That's what it's all about.
There's a certain percentage of the, you get like 2% rebate or certainly?
I'm not sure what the actual amount equates to, I'd have to talk to Anna and find out for sure what that is, but, yeah, I mean, any time that the city is looking to buy things, it doesn't matter if it's carbon paper, coffee machines, to toilet accessory, I mean, whatever the case may be, we should always be checking on NGPA. They do the competitive bid thing, it's all pre-negotiated prices, and we also get credit for buying there, so it's a good deal for the city if we can possibly use it.
Sure. But, yeah, definitely.
Did you check on that, Dan, it's very possible this might be one.
Should we make a motion that he can go ahead and buy one up to this price lower if he gets more?
I could come back next council, he likes others, I just want to make sure, I gotta stay part of this year, if we wanted me to get a approval, or if we're going to get a...
It'd be kind of that, yeah, I'd like to at least buy it this year if at all possible.
Okay, so we'll buy some next year, like I said, I really haven't bought any expensive, uh, equipment this year.
No.
That, the rough mower was on last, there's a, yeah, rough mower, very much, so, by the next council.
Yeah, why don't you just check with Dan, Nicole, we can hold it in for you, and see what's up there.
That's all I got.
Thanks, Dan. Thanks, Dan. Nicole?
All right. I don't have much of an update other than signing this resolution from last time from SEH, the numbers are different. So he just wanted to send an updated, an updated resolution, it's without my five dollars, so he just wanted he has to send it on, sign the resolution. Other than that, we are working, still working on balancing the statement and going from there, working hard and-
We'll talk about some ideas that I have and that I talked about at the workshop tomorrow evening as well on some things I think that would help us get a handle on and, yeah, for yourself to do for important things, or at least some different things.
Yeah, we've spent a lot of time on that, I'm sure.
Yeah, yeah, it's really been, it's really been, yeah, I know, that's all. Just, go through there, anything else?
Other than that, I think that-
Do we need to make a motion to redo that?
We are gonna have to.
Red motion.
When does, when does Scott's gonna need that, what is the dollar amount on that?
Sixty-five dollars.
Yeah, higher or lower?
So it was lower, so it was this, the new amount was two oh one, two five nine seven one, difference of two oh one, two six five point oh four.
Yeah, we will need to do a motion, we should probably try and do that at this meeting and get it amended.
I make a motion to amend that resolution, that's on that street project?
Yep.
I'll second that.
Motion on the floor by Mike and seconded by Mary, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, carried unanimously, that way you won't screw it up as far as the assessments and stuff, that will be for the next council meeting anyway, so.
I just also, a thank you came in from the Stankel family, it says, thank you for the kind gift and condolences, it was very much appreciated.
Very nice. Wish Danny and his family all the best. Did anybody else have anything?
I did, did we ever get that letter back from him? Have you tried it?
Oh, that's cool, it's not here.
Anything else?
I make a motion for it, there is a motion on the floor by-
I second your, seconded by Mary, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye, aye, opposed.
Hey, Dan, a question for you, what do you guys use for fertilizer, liquid or ranular?
Manchester.
I don't know. How do you- Well, fuck one.